Good evening, everybody. Like the call to order, the special meeting of the Town Superior Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Could you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Protem Neil Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Jen Cowish.
Here.
Trustee Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Trustee Bob McCool.
Here.
Trustee Jason Serbu.
Here.
Trustee Sandy Hammerly.
Here.
Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is item 2C, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Protem Shaw and a second from trustee McCool. All those in favor. Passes unanimously. And we're on to item three, which is consideration of a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town Superior calling a special election for December 10th, 2024, to consider adoption of the proposed Home Rule Charter. Before I turn this over to you, Matt, I just have a couple preliminary comments that I'm gonna just give here for the public. So, the Town Board learned late last Monday night that the Home Rule Charter question had not been submitted to the Boulder County Clerk and Recorder's Office. And this was the town's mistake. We own it. It was not the county's mistake. After this discovery, we spent the following 36 hours trying to correct this issue to get the question back on the ballot and avoid the need for a special election. When it became clear that we couldn't have ballots reprinted with the Home Rule Charter question on it because overseas voter ballots had already been printed and mailed, we looked at our options, one of which was for us to call this special meeting tonight and to put the question of setting a special election before the Town Board, and that's why we're here tonight. There are obviously a lot of questions that I have, that we all have, that I'm sure many of you have, about what happened, how and why the Home Rule Charter question did not get submitted to Boulder County, and what we can put in place to make sure that something like this never happens again. While we may ask some of those questions tonight, we're not going to be able to answer all of those questions tonight, so I just ask for some patience on that. But rest assured, we will conduct a thorough investigation as to what failed, and that information will be released publicly. But for tonight, we're here to correct the immediate pressing concern, how to get the Home Rule Charter question considered by the voters within the tight deadlines that are imposed by Colorado law, which after all is what the voters have been expecting to do since we elected Charter Commission members back in 2023. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you, Matt, to introduce this item, and then we can get into questions.
Mark, can I just say a couple quick things?
Yes.
Before we turn it over to Matt. Sorry, Matt. Just wanted to comment. I've been a little disappointed to see the amount of finger pointing and blame that's gone around on social media and in the news since we learned about this. And just wanted to remind everybody, we have an absolutely incredible staff and a staff that neighboring municipalities are extremely envious of. So, just want to let everybody know that, you know, we are all human beings, including our staff, and no one here, including everyone on this dais, we're all humans, we're not infallible, we all make mistakes. So, I'm not trying to minimize the impact of the mistake or the gravity because it's substantial. But I do want to make sure that we're focused on the right things, and this didn't happen because of one or two people. This happened because we do not have adequate procedures in place to prevent it. So, similar to what Mark said, I'm not really interested in continuing this discussion about finger pointing and blame because it's not productive. I think that we need to focus on where that procedure failed so that we can make sure it doesn't happen again, and more urgently, what we need to do to get the Home Rule Ballot Measure across the finish line because that should be our sole focus and not something unproductive as far as trying to figure out who is to blame. Because again, it's a procedure, it's not a person. So, just wanted to throw that out there so we're focused on the right thing because I think the focus has been a little off, and the focus needs to be on the ballot measure and what we need to do to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Matt?
Thank you for those comments. As has been mentioned, it's unfortunate that the Home Rule Ballot Question was not submitted to the Boulder County Elections Division in time to make it on the ballot. I appreciate the town attorney and town clerk's efforts last week to try to find a solution to get this added to the ballot. Unfortunately, they were not successful, and as a result, our option now is to have a special election on December 10th. I want to thank the Charter Commission for all their work over the past six months to get us a great Home Rule Charter that's, if approved, is going to be a wonderful benefit to the town in many ways, including expanded local control. I want to thank Shannon for her work this last week in trying to identify vendors that can help facilitate a special election for the town while the town clerk has been out of the office. We've been able to identify one vendor, which I signed an agreement with on Monday, due to the fact that our first deadline for a special election is a week from this Friday on the 11th, which is very short turnaround. So, I have Sue Blair with that company's Community Resource Services of Colorado. They have experience holding elections for special districts and cities. This company was also recommended to us by the Boulder County Elections Division staff as well, and have worked with the Boulder County Elections Division in the past on other elections. Sue Blair is with us tonight via Zoom to answer any questions the board might have about the special election process. And Sue also has quite a bit of experience running elections as well. I think everybody that's involved, has been involved in this feels horrible that this has happened and that the town is in this situation. And moving forward, I'll be working with the town attorney and the town clerk and staff to make sure additional processes are in place to make sure something like this never happens again. With that, we're available for questions from the board, or if the board would like, I could have asked Sue to give a brief introduction, whichever you would prefer.
Why don't we hear from Sue, and then we can ask the questions?
Okay. Sue, are you there?
Hi, everyone. I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Again, my name is Sue Blair. Let's get my video going here. There we go. Can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am the CEO of Community Resource Services. Through my career, starting in 1980, I started working with special districts and municipalities. Part of my duties was to serve as the election official for many different jurisdictions. I've ran several thousand elections through the years. Some of them were very contentious. I was involved in the election for the Rappel County Clerk and Recorder recall. The last municipal election that was really, it was difficult. It was the City of Westminster recall election back in '21. There were 80,000 eligible electors there. So, we at CRS have a staff of about 12 that are pretty dedicated to elections. Back in 2020, out of our office, we sent out 850,000 ballots to 62 different jurisdictions throughout the state of Colorado. We end up hiring a group of about 50 to 60 other folks that come in that have served as judges for me for many, many years. So, I'm also the town clerk for the town of Beaumar. I've worked with Kendra Carberry. So, she knows us. And also, town of Columbine Valley. Work with all the different county clerks, special district elections. The eligible elector is different than what it is in a municipality, so we have to deal with the assessor's offices also. So, happy to provide any references I can for you.
All right. Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
All right. Let's turn it over to questions from the board. I know I have some questions, but happy to let others start, if anybody wants to jump in. All right, I'll jump in. First question I have is with regards to the estimate for the cost that's in the packet, so it's $59,000. And originally, in the original memo that was posted, I think it was $30,000, and it increased to $59,000. So, my question is, $59,000, that's for a mail ballot election, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Does that include an in-person polling place at Town Hall?
It's mail only.
Mail only? Okay. And what would be the cost of just doing an in-person election?
I would defer to Sue on that question.
So, with a polling place election versus a mail ballot, you're probably going to decrease your costs by maybe one-third as far as your printing costs go. Your printing costs alone for this election, I reached out to our printer, and they were like $27,000. I think postage was 33, if I have that right.
That's correct.
So, you'd save your postage, and you'd probably save maybe $10,000 in your printing costs. As far as our time goes, you know, it just depends. We would be supplying judges. They have to be there from 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM. We'd have to get counting judges in there, too, I would assume. So, on our time, maybe you would save 5,000 to 8,000, I'll say. And I think our estimate was 32. We bill on an hourly basis. Our rates are from probably 130 to 220 an hour, depending on who's doing the work. So, you're only going to be charged, you know, for the hours that we actually spend. As far as our printing invoice or estimate goes, CRS doesn't mark that up. So, whatever that ends up being is what the town would need to pay.
Do we have an understanding of what the turnout is? I mean, typically, we have a polling place here in Town Hall for the coordinated elections. How many people actually vote in person versus using the mail-in ballots?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Next kind of line of question that I have is, what are the consequences if we don't call a special election? What happens to the draft, and this is really a question for legal, what happens to the draft Home Rule Charter? What happens to the existing Home Rule Charter Commission? Do we need to start over? Do we need to elect a new Charter Commission? Do we need to draft a new Charter, schedule a new election of the Charter? So, if you can kind of just walk us through the consequences if we don't take the action tonight that's contemplated on the agenda?
Yeah. You know, I think this isn't really a situation that's contemplated by statute. The Charter statute is very, it's very cookbook, right? It's very paint-by-numbers. You do this, and then you do this, and then you do this. The situation is a bit unprecedented about what would happen if you didn't kind of go to special election. And, you know, just to be, you know, in the interest of transparency, and this is even in the resolution, we are already kind of, we've already kind of veered into those waters of uncertainty. So, what would happen? You know, I could only guess. I suppose, you know, if we didn't call this, it would be treated one of two ways. One, I suppose I could see it treated as a failure to adopt it. That is kind of technically what's happening, right? You send it to election, and it did not get adopted at election. Obviously, it didn't get adopted because it didn't get a chance to get voted on. So, that's not really a purely honest reading of that, but a purely honest reading of it doesn't really exist and under what statute exists right now. So, the next best, you know, if you don't do it within this timeframe, and I should add, again, this is in the resolution, but just kind of for, you know, complete clarity, so people don't have to go read the resolution. When you published the Charter, so the Charter Commission came here in May, and then we heard it, and then we published it at the beginning of June. The statute says you have between, I think it's 30 or 60 and 185 days, I know the backend one, 185 days to vote on it, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be voted on at a coordinated election or a general election. You can choose to do a special. You can kind of choose to do it whenever you want. Obviously, virtually all towns do it in a coordinated way to kind of avoid multiple votings. So, that being said, that's what pushed us quickly and strongly towards the December 10th date. By some serendipity, we are still within that, just because of when we published it. We published it pretty close to the last possible day. We can publish it after the Charter Commission came in, presented in May. So, that's kind of a long-winded answer that hopefully kind of gets to part of your question. In terms of what happens to the Charter Commission, they're not disbanded unless it fails twice. So, you know, kind of in the worst possible scenario, you know, you count it as one failure, they're still in. In a better possible scenario, an arguable scenario, there hasn't been a failure yet, and they're still together. But again, that's more of my opining on it. Again, statute itself doesn't clearly lay out what happens here.
Yeah, and I understand that the statute doesn't necessarily contemplate the express situation, but kind of following the line of thought of, you know, treating it as a failure, like if that happened, and then the Charter, so it sounds like we wouldn't need to necessarily elect a new Charter Commission, but they would get another opportunity to correct the Charter or draft a new Charter or do whatever, and then there would be another election?
Yeah, and I feel, you know, obviously, lawyers don't speak in absolutes, but I would argue that very strongly, that the Charter Commission, the Charter we have, the Charter Commission we have, should be able to continue its work until it's ultimately seen out one way or another.
But the process of kind of where that would lead is ultimately, they would essentially resubmit the same Charter, and then we would have up to 185 days to have an election, whether it's a special election that gets called or something that is coordinated with a general election, depending on when it's submitted to the town.
Right. Right. It would look something like that. And, you know, in that case, again, you're talking more about that 185-day deadline than the early 60-day deadline, probably. And, you know, the next election would be an odd-year election, which are a bit strange anyway. But so it probably just would follow the same timeline we follow this year, except, you know, change everything to 2025.
Is there anything in the statute that has like some sort of deadline by which the Charter Commission would need to resubmit it? I know we have the 185 deadline.
Yeah.
To have this election now on the Charter that's been submitted, but, you know, could they, in theory, you know, take it under advisement and then resubmit it in two years?
Yeah. And I can get, I can, that question, I don't have a, I don't feel as good about, and I can quickly look it up. I know where it is. I'm pretty sure statute just says you go back to the drawing board, right, and you submit it again. And then it's based off of election. You have two elections, right? So, I suppose, and again, and I can, you know, we can kind of go around the horn, and I can revisit this question, or we can revisit it at a later date. But it's by, you know, it's two failures at election.
Yeah.
And so technically, you know, there's an argument out there, right, that you could spend the next 15 years drafting it again and try again. Obviously, that's not what happens practically, but I think that argument at least exists. From my memory of it, again, I'd want to, you know, I want to be super sure on all this stuff.
But the Charter Commission had deadlines originally by which they needed to complete their draft, right?
Yeah, 180 days. Yeah, from failure. So, you're probably looking at some kind of deadline like that again. Again, it's strange because that's just the first, that's the first, for the first draft, I have to, again, I want to check to make sure that's there for the second draft, if the whole process starts over, or if it's just kind of a quick redo or something like that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the reason why I'm asking is just to kind of get a feel for what the cost would be of this special election that we're looking at now, which we know the estimate is around $60,000, versus, you know, is there the possibility for considering it at a future, you know, coordinated election? Sounds like waiting until 2026 probably wouldn't comply. We'd have to do it in 2025. We don't have anything that's going to the ballot in 2025. So, in order to participate in that, there would be, you know, the costs associated with the special participation in that election, right? So, it's not like there's zero cost if we went to the voters in 2025. Do we know what it costs generally for the town to participate in those off-year elections when we don't have trustee candidates that are up for election? If we just wanted to participate in a general county coordinate?
Previous, I think it's around $15,000.
Okay. And do we have any suggestions? Okay, so that answers that question. Do we have any suggestions from staff as to where we should find the money to pay for this special election? Are there going to be any kind of budgetary changes or adjustments that are going to be proposed that would pay for this mistake?
Right now, it's expected to come out of the general fund reserve, the ending fund balance that we have. But we could look at additional cuts in other areas as well.
Okay.
We have first reading on October 14th and the second, final reading or adoption on October 28th, so we have some times to identify potential cuts.
Yeah, and if we're spending the money this year, I'm not necessarily looking at adjustments to the budget for next year, but really adjustments to the budget for this year.
And to kind of put a pin, thanks for giving me a second to look it up. So, the process actually, so I was a bit wrong. The process does restart. So, if you don't, if it were to fail, if it were treated as a failure or whatever that would look like, you just go back and kind of restart the whole thing, but it'd be the same commission.
Okay. Others? Questions?
This is just a, not a, probably, here's the question. We have elections that are being contested all over the United States. Hopefully, this one would not be. But who counts the ballots? And what is the, you know, I think that's the big question for me. Does, do our contractor count the ballots, or does BOCO do it?
Sue can answer, but I believe Community Resource Services of Colorado would do those. They would have the election judges to verify proper election, canvassing board, I think, as well, and they would, they have the machines to count the ballots. But Sue, anything to add?
That's correct. So, if it's mail ballot, we'd have the mailed ballots returned to our address. And then we have election judges who would go through the signature verification process, as well as, you know, contacting any electors that they can't tie a signature to the ballot. We would take care of all of that. And then once those signatures are verified, ballots would be opened. And we do run ESNS equipment. You might have heard of Dominion ESNS. There's a few of them. And we usually run ESNS, which has been certified. So, everything would come back to us, and we would process and conduct the election for the town.
But you'd still be able to use the Dropbox here, and you guys would be able, you would pick them up at the Dropbox? They don't have to go in the mail?
Correct. Well, and I think I discussed that with Shannon and Martin, and we would need to reach out to Boulder County just to ensure that we could use that ballot box. But I assume we would be able to.
Okay. Thank you.
How long would you estimate the counting time to take? You know, obviously, it depends on how many ballots get submitted, but between the 10th, when do you think you'd be able to officially certify the election?
So, we can start counting 15 days prior to the election, which is November 25th. So, our judges would already be in place. We could begin to count then. And that's also the last day we can mail ballot packets out. So, our intent usually is to have everything counted up to Election Day and then just have to process the ballots that come in on Election Day.
And will we have enough time for any overseas ballots that need to get out and returned?
Yes. Those overseas ballots go out, let me get the date, October 26th. So, we're going to have to really push on that. And then YOCAV voters have eight days after the date of the election to return their ballots. after the date of the election to return their ballot, so.
All right, thank you.
Wouldn't have a final count until after that, period.
Okay.
I'm along those same lines. If we did an in-person election, how long does it take to get those results? And also, is it possible to do an in-person election with a hybrid where overseas is able to still get mail ballots?
So YOCAV ballots have to be delivered either via fax, email, or mailed, and the voter actually lets the county clerk know how they want to receive that ballot. So that's, that's already in place. As far as how long it would take to get results, if we brought in a team of counting judges, they could be counting throughout the day, you know, trying to stay on top of the count.
Other questions on the special election process? I do have, you know, a couple kind of comments about, not necessarily the special election, but just in terms of, you know, the, the town's mistake, and just for purposes of the, of the public understanding kind of where we are in this process. You know, one of the things that the, that the board is interested in, that I'm interested in, that I believe the entire board is interested in, is knowing everyone who's had, you know, eyes on this issue and had the opportunity to, to correct the error before it was too late, and the documents had, had already gone out. We've asked for copies of correspondence with the county related to this election, we've received some of those documents already. We've also asked for internal correspondence within the town and with council related to the election. I haven't received those documents so far, but we've also asked the following questions. We're continuing to, to get answers to these questions, but for purposes of, of the public record, those questions are kind of twofold. One, about kind of the overall ballot question process, which is, you know, what is the process for getting ballot questions onto the ballot? The deadlines, timelines associated with those questions? Who from the town is responsible for interacting with the county on these issues? The medium for the correspondence, whether it's email, regular mail, et cetera, and who was copied on that correspondence? And then specifically, then what failed on, on the process? When the ballot questions were actually sent to the county? By whom? Who was copied? Whether the county acknowledged receipt? Who from the town received any receipt? And was there any additional information sent by the county to the town related to this section, this election? And if so, who received that and when? Specifically, what we're looking for, and what I'm looking for, is, you know, the opportunities that were available, where the town could have corrected this oversight before the deadline to print and mail the ballots. One of the things that, that we've learned now in the Nine News story that, that came out, was that the town did receive a proof of the ballot, and actually corrected a typographical error, and sent that information back to the county, related to the sales tax ballot issue, but not to the, the home rule question. That's, you know, disappointing and embarrassing that that's coming out in the press, and not through the documents and questions, but those are the, the sorts of things that we're going to need to figure out to fully and completely understand this process and make sure that it doesn't happen again. So, any additional questions or comments from the board? Otherwise, I'll open up for public comment.
I have one last question. In the cost that we have right now of $59,000, should we have to have a recount? Is that included in there, or would that be an additional, you know, because it could be real close? Would that be an additional charge, Sue?
It, it really depends how many hours we end up billing.
Okay.
Most likely, a recount would be part of that total for our time, because I don't think we're going to, you know, again, it depends on community involvement, and it depends on lots of factors when you run an election, but a recount is fairly simple, especially when you're using equipment to count.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
All right. At this time, I will open up the floor to public comment here in the boardroom first, and then turn to Zoom. If you'd like to give public comment, if you could just sign in at the, the desk there, and then give your first and last name, or at the podium, your first and last name, and the town in which you reside, you don't need to give your street address.
Good evening. My name is Mike Foster. I served on the Home Rule Commission, and I'm in full transparency, a candidate for Thank you for all your deliberations on this, I really appreciate it, and just want to thank town staff for trying to help the trustees answer these really important questions. The issue before you this evening is a challenging one, and many members of the community are looking for understanding of what led to this and accountability for who's responsible. As you deliberate, I urge this not turn into a crusade. We are humans, and we occasionally make mistakes. What's important to me as a leader is that we learn from this, and we put the steps and processes in place to ensure that it doesn't happen again. As for a Home Rule Commissioner, it's disappointed that, that we're in this position. However, as the board considers calling for special election, please keep this in mind. While this may cost the town $59,000, there are plenty of offsets in the existing operating budget. I spent about 15 minutes going through the town budget last night, line by line, and I've come up with at least $28,000 in savings. And these are used based on the budget-to-actuals, they're published on the town website as of September, or excuse me, August 27th. Those areas are savings in the membership line items, travel expenses, and community volunteer projects. Again, those line items are underspent to the tune of about $28,000. I am confident that Matt and his staff can come up with the remaining $31,000 to fund this, and so that we don't have to take it out of general fund reserves. Again, I spent 15 minutes going through the budget last night and came up with this money. This is not going to be difficult to find. It's also important to think about, in five, 10, 20 years, cost is not even going to be discussed. What's going to be discussed is that we have home rule, and that we have, as a town, the freedom to choose our own path, and that we have local control. That's what's important. In closing, I'd like to remind you that one of the arguments used against women's suffrage was cost. Who today thinks about the cost of a woman to vote? I certainly don't. What we think about is the freedom that women and men have an equal right to vote in this country, not the cost. So what's important here is that Superior passes a home rule. Thank you for your time, and I recommend approving the special election. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Additional public comment here in the boardroom?
I'm George Cuffner, 7520 West Gold Creek Drive, Superior. It, it is a, a bad thing that we didn't get the right paperwork in, but I think especially election, we won't get the turnout that we need to get the true numbers. It's not like people are for the agenda election, they're coming down here, there's a lot more coming, and we're getting a truer dimension of who wants it and who don't. I don't think we're going to get that in a special election. So I think we need to wait until we have an election in '26. We know, all we got to do is restart the committee at least 185 days or whatever in front, and do it again. We don't have to do a new charter, none of that, we can just do a do-over, start then, and make sure we get all of our dates right, and then we'll get a lot more people to vote on this, we'll get true numbers out of the residents of this town. So I think we, instead of spending $60,000, we're already spending $60 million next year, we got to stop sipping money. We're not a money tree here. Our taxes are up there pretty, pretty far, and we need to say, okay, we made a mistake, we got to wait two years, but we're not going to make another mistake, we're going to do it right. And in the meantime, we save 60,000, or, yeah, 60,000, $59,000, whatever, dollars. And I think we get a better, better judgment of people. So I think we need to wait until we have a regular election for new board members, and everybody, you get a heck of a lot more people coming down here for that than you are going to have for this special election. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Welch.
Good evening. Ryan Welch, Superior resident, also a member of the Home Rule Committee. Wow, didn't think we'd be here, but I do want to say just a few things about this. You know, I, I heard the news, I was pretty heartbroken, right? Because you're like, you put all this effort into it, and you see this, and wow. But quickly, I reminded myself that I'm not perfect in my job. You know, I spent today fixing a pretty big mistake I made, I hope my boss isn't watching, but, you know, people are human, right? And, and I think that any of those people, and back to what Trustee Miller was saying, anybody that is accusing the town of something nefarious, or trying to go after somebody, just go and volunteer for a committee, or get involved with the town and get to know these people, you'll have a different opinion if you do that. So, you know, town, mistakes happen. A couple of things, though, I do think that we should move forward with the election. One thing that wasn't considered is what happens if members fall off the committee, right? Two of the members are up for the board, and I don't think they could serve on the board in the Home Rule Committee, right? And then if it delays a couple more years, and people volunteer out, you probably have to go to another election to vote for a new committee, and then that whole year process starts again. So I think that there, I don't know, I think we should be very careful about what happens if we don't hit this 185-day deadline here. There were some rumblings of some discussion that the whole process started over, I didn't quite hear what you were saying on that, but if it did, that means that, and I, I'd also heard that you had to wait another two years before you could start. Again, I don't know that that's true, but we should be very careful on making sure that that absolute, you know, we know exactly what it means if we miss this 185-day deadline. So if we're considering not doing it, let's make sure that that is, you know, our, everything is, is considered there. Because if we do have to wait two years, so it's two years, then you get the new commissioners on the ballot, then it's another year, right, to go through redoing a charter, so it's the legal fees, it's all the, all the process we got to go through to get to another election. So I, while I, I don't know what the turnout will be like, I think there's also some, if it's a mail ballot, there actually may, if you've all gotten your blue book and seen how many ballot pieces there are right now, it's overwhelming. So actually, people may actually put more attention to home rule when it's the only thing they need to consider. The risk would be that you lose the ballot, right? Or you say, I just voted, why am I getting another, another ballot here? But the Home Rule, the issues group for the Home Rule Committee, we're, we'll be trying to get ahead of this with community outreach, and signage, and whatnot, of reminding people that they need to vote for this. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comment here in the boardroom? Dalton Valet.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Dalton Valet. I served as the Chair of the Home Rule Commission, I'm also a Superior resident. One of the things that I would really like to highlight for residents potentially confused with this is the document itself that is going to be voted on potentially at this upcoming special election, has not changed since we transmitted this to the town several months ago. Regardless of if you're going to be voting on it on General Election Day in November, or if it would be coming along to you in December on this proposed date, the document itself remains the same. We, as a commission, are incredibly proud of the document that we created. You can view all of our agenda meetings on the Superior website to see our discussions on a number of different topics, talking about the importance and necessary regulations for a home rule municipality, and you can read it in full, it's only 35 pages, it's meant to be a readable document for the average resident. I encourage everyone to go ahead and still review that. And we were always planning as a separate issue committee comprised of home rule commissioners to educate people throughout this month, host educational sessions, continuously post on Facebook information about home rule. We're committed with this potential change to double our efforts, we'll be hosting multiple educational sessions if this measure is approved tonight for the special election, and not just October, but November, and even December, to educate people about what home rule is, details about the special election, too. We've already purchased signage as well, we're going to have some yard signs out to educate individuals throughout the neighborhood about the special election date, even looking at Vista Print earlier today to make sure we can get some stickers on there, to make sure that people know what the date of the election itself would be. And as much as I love seeing campaign signs out for all the candidates now, I do think if there are home rule alone signs out in Superior, that could also bolster potential awareness about this specific ballot initiative. So we do feel confident being able to educate people in the weeks and months ahead about this special election, about the contents of the charter, and the benefits of home rule itself. I just want to laud the Board of Trustees for beginning this process, understanding the strict timelines with it. The reason that this process began basically a little more than 18 months ago was to try to line it up with the general election to improve voter turnout. If we miss this special election, the town does basically get penalized, and that they can't pursue home rule for an additional two years after the fact. So that is something to also consider if we miss some of these key election dates. From Colorado statute, you wouldn't be able to just presume or resume the Home Rule Commission work, there is kind of a penalizing factor with this involved if you miss certain deadlines. So that's why we have to, in my view, go ahead with a special election. I encourage everyone to review the resources available online, engage with us as a commission, go to our home rule email address if you have any sort of questions, homerule@superiorgov.com, and we'll be more than happy to answer anything that you have, but I do want to thank everyone involved with this process, and making sure that we're going to educate voters as best as we can to get home rule across the finishing line. Thank you.
Thank you, Dalton. Mayor Folsom.
Hi, everyone. Clint Folsom, Superior resident, and it's great to be back here, not under these circumstances. I just, I want to start by saying that I had the honor of working with, you know, for the town on a planning commission for six years, mayor for eight years, worked with staff extensively during those years, and, and, you know, true group of professionals, and would echo the comments that Trustee Miller and my colleagues have made about, you know, individuals making mistakes. It happens. I think what's important is you're here tonight, the board is here, you called a special meeting, you've got a resolution on the table, you got a way to deal with this. And that's one of the many things I appreciate about this town, is that we own things when, when things need to be dealt with. I mean, I look at this, it's like a, a bad storm. You know, we had a bad storm, knocked down a bunch of trees, and, you know, are we going to wait two years to pick them up? No, we're going to pick them up, and we're going to figure out the money to do it. And that's what this is. It's just a storm that we got to get through, and we got to clean it up. So I would encourage you to pass the resolution that's on the agenda tonight. It's a big cost, and I would encourage you to do mail ballot voting only, because I think the community is well-established in using mail ballots, and that's what people expect. I think the turnout for in-person voting would be extremely low, because you're depending on people to show up on a certain day, and people got busy lives, and so I think having a mail ballot makes all the sense in the world. It's an extra cost, but again, this is cleaning up a storm. So approve it, mail ballot, and, and let's get it done. And then also ask for the support of, of the town board and staff to communicate, you know, exactly what happened, just alleviate the concerns of, of residents, you know, why is this happening? Well, it was, it was a mistake, but we're going to deal with it. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Additional public comment here in the boardroom? All right. Seeing none, I'll turn to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? If so, please use the raise hand feature, and I will recognize you in the order in which I see your hand raised. Seeing none. All right, circling back to the boardroom, last chance, public comment? All right. Public comment is closed, and we will turn back to the board for final discussion. Anybody want to go first? Otherwise, I can go first, it's fine. I'll go first. I want to take a moment to apologize to the Home Rule Charter Commission, this is obviously not what you signed up for. You signed up for a truly important and tough job to, to draft a really great charter, and you expected to have an election this November, and you should have had an election this November. So in that regard, we failed you, and I apologize for that work. I also want to apologize to our residents, who were expecting to have a vote on that Home Rule Charter. They voted in 2020. They voted in 2023 and elected nine Home Rule Charter Commission members with the understanding that we'd have an election in 2024 to vote on the charter that they drafted. So both the residents and the Charter Commission did their jobs, but the town failed in its job. This was an unnecessary, unforced error and it's going to result in unnecessary expenses. I do agree that mistakes do happen, but this is, in my opinion, a mistake that never should have happened. But at the end of the day, we owe it to the residents, we owe it to the Charter Commission to have an election and to have one as quickly as possible. We're also in a unique position right now because we can't have a special election before, if I'm reading all these things right, before 60 days, which is like December 1st. We need to have one within 185 days after the charter was submitted, which is December 14th. We can't have a special election until 32 days after Election Day, which is November 5th, and it must be on a Tuesday. So December 10th falls in that Goldilocks sweet spot of pretty much the only day that I think we can actually pull this off.
It is the only day you can pull it off.
It's the only day that we can pull this off. So I guess we're lucky in that regard that we have the opportunity to fix this mistake before we were kind of statutorily precluded from doing so. But I do agree that we need to have a full investigation, have, you know, accountability for how this happened and then, you know, put in place all of the necessary procedures to ensure that this can never happen again. I am supportive of the resolution that's drafted, supportive of having a mail-in ballot election on December 10th. And hopefully, we'll be able to put this behind us and then we'll just, you know, move forward with the investigation and figuring out, you know, how to pay for this out of the budget as it currently is approved. But I am supportive of the resolution as drafted. And I appreciate all of the scrambling that staff and that town council has done to try to fix this mistake without the need for a special election. Unfortunately, here we are. I do appreciate all the effort to get this special meeting called and to put this resolution together in very rapid time. So those are my thoughts. Others?
I'll just, I'll personally apologize also to the commission, but not to belabor the point, agree with everything that's been said. And Mayor Laces, thank you for leading us through this and I'm in support of the resolution.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, I think the buck stops with us. It's our fault. We're the board, we're in charge, first rule of management. You know, we take responsibility for this. So this is on us as a board. And as Mark said, we will do everything we can to rectify the thing. But, you know, to trustee Miller's point, we're not looking to scapegoat any staff member or to go after one individual person. More importantly, we need to just figure out what our protocol is and why it failed and why, what we need to do going forward is probably the quickest course of action. I'm definitely in favor of having a special election for this because we owe it to the home rule, we owe it to the members who busted their butts for the 180 days to get this done, to create the charter and to bring it to our attention and to put it on the ballot. And we could not get it on the ballot, so, you know, that's on us. But I think we need to make good for that and make sure that we do hold an election. And I think candidate Mike Foster had some really good ideas about where to get money to cull it from the budget. There's another really big number we can pop out right away and we can pretty much cover this right now. And I'm just going to bring this up during our budget meeting. But we spend $50,000 on food before these meetings. Do we really need that? I think we can cut that out of the budget right now and that's going to pay for a massive chunk of this. So, you know, it's a nicety, sure, it's nice to have, but I don't necessarily see the taxpayers or the residents having to pay for our dinners. So that's a $50,000 chunk right there. We can throw right down on this and pretty much cover it and just have to make up the $9,000. So, I mean, there are ways we can do it. And I'm willing to take the hit on some of the niceties that we have as a board just to make sure that we show you that we're going to reciprocate and we're going to make amends for this and we're going to get it done. Thanks.
Others? Neil?
So I'm going to back up just a little bit. You know, so the board put a lot of thought into proceeding with the Home Rule Charter over 18 months ago. And that goes back to actions the state started taking in 2023 that would have tied our hands in relation to land use and development. So while the state did pass an amended set of bills in '24 that took out some of the punitive measures that they envisioned in 2023, they did still pass a whole slew of land use measures. Moreover, the special legislative session that was held a month ago passed a number of measures related to property tax that specifically affect statutory towns differently than home rule municipalities. This board's decision to pursue a home rule charter has not changed with the delay of the vote on the charter. The Home Rule Commission has done a phenomenal job of recommending outstanding charter and I appreciate all the work that all of you have put into that. Like everybody in this room, I am incredibly disappointed that this didn't get on the ballot. I expect that we'll have a thorough investigation of what happened and I know we'll have a slate of corrective actions on what needs to happen going forward. Nevertheless, I am fully supportive of a special election and shifting our focus onto passing the Home Rule Charter. For a brief moment, I was actually kind of excited to vote in person again since it's been more than 20 years since I've done that, you know, getting to hold a pencil and trying to remember how to vote. But I know that mail-in elections have substantially higher participation rates, so I'm in support of the resolution as drafted.
Thanks, Neil. Anybody else? If not, I'll... Stephanie?
Just real quick. Do want to thank the Home Rule Commission for all your time in creating a really well-balanced and thoughtful charter and do apologize that it won't be on the ballot in November. But, you know, to your point, I think we might get a little more time for education and I think that it'll maybe create some more engagement with it not being buried in a ballot that's pretty dense in November. I am supportive of the ballot, or the measure as presented for the election on December 10th. I want to make sure that we do get this across the finish line and give residents an opportunity to vote on it. I'm also in favor of accountability and reviewing our procedures and correcting them because it's clear that they are not quite tight enough. Not in favor of raking our staff over the coals, to Clint's point and others, we are blessed to have a phenomenal staff and humans make mistakes. And we just need to correct the procedures that led to this and not necessarily have a scapegoat and blame somebody or a group of people for something that, quite honestly, to Jason's point, the buck stops with us and we should have ensured it didn't happen. And there are cost savings to, you know, candidate Mike Foster's point. And, you know, Jason, I'm more than willing to give up dinners so that we can pay for something like this. This is far more important. So, long story short, in favor of the December 10th election.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Anybody else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Town Superior Resolution Number R-53, Series 2024, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town Superior calling for a special election on December 10th, 2024 to consider adoption of the proposed Home Rule Charter.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Shaw and a second from trustee Hammerly. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Hammerly, yes. Trustee Serbu?
Yes.
Trustee McCool?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Okay. It passes unanimously and we will have a special election on December 10th. Thank you all for being here tonight and for your comments and for your work drafting our charter. And with that, unless there's anything further, I will adjourn us at 6:51.